We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance by Secretary Brooks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Okay, next is good news from Mr. Hilton.
All right, good evening trustees. Up first tonight in good news, I have some exciting news from the L I S D Tech Center. They have announced it's their trades awards recipients for the first marking period of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So this, what this award does is it recognizes students who demonstrated strong work habits. Trades actually stands for teamwork, responsibility, attitude, dependability, effort, and safety. So these students of ours here at the high school have been awarded or recognized for their efforts in, in trades. And so I'm not going to read them all to you, but I just wanted to mention them tonight. They are setting a positive example in their technical training and we are, we are offering congratulations to each and every one of them. So next up trustees, I've, I've mentioned these before, but I haven't brought forward any of them here in probably a month or six weeks. And I, I thought tonight might be a good time to bring a couple back. So you know through our shout-outs that we continue to recognize staff that make up the Tecumseh Public Schools because the truth is they really are the heart and soul of our school district. And so first up tonight is Mr. Mckincheck. You can see, you can see up on the screen, I'll, I'll take a moment and read it. His shout-out reads, "Mr. Mckincheck is the driving force in Tecumseh's band program. He gets our children to not only begin to love playing an instrument, but to keep going throughout their T P S career, whether they're marching on the field or in the orchestra. He spends hours both in the classroom and outside showing his love for not just our students, but our music department in general. We love our Mr. Mckincheck." And then I thought I'd share another one. This one is Mr. Tony Fallsgraph, who's a second grade teacher over at Sutton. "Mr. Fallsgraph is a wonderful teacher. He enters the classroom every day with the biggest smile and positive attitude. He listens to each of his students. He encourages them, encourages them to do their best and gives clear expectations. He's, he makes learning fun and exciting. The kids thrive on his energy and step up to any challenge he gives them. The kids look forward to entering his class. He makes the learning environment fun." So again trustees, I, I just think it's important that we, we, you can find more of these on our Facebook page. I'd just like to bring a, a couple of them forward to, to board meetings to share with you because they really are the heart and soul of our school district. Trustees, maybe you were there as well, but back on Friday, November seventh, the city hosted a holiday open house where I was downtown and just happened to run into a wonderful group of kids. Those kids being our very own choir led by Mr. Simon Savasky. Truthfully, I knew they'd be there and I really wanted to get down there and see them anyway. But they were touring downtown caroling for businesses and patrons and they were simply fantastic. So normally, I think you picked this up about me, normally would, this would be the time when I'd show you a, a video of the event, but I chose not to do that because Simon and I have been talking about a live performance for you. So coming soon, the choir will be here at a board meeting to, to perform in person. Because if you haven't seen them in person, well, you, you really should. And then last up this evening trustees, you know, we're, we're gathering soon for Thanksgiving and I just wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude for each of you and for the Tecumseh Public Schools community and to, to thank our teachers and staff who've guarded, who've guided our students every single day. I am, I am truly grateful to be a part of this community, to work alongside each and every one of you and each and every one of our staff. And I wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving filled with lots of memories and precious moments with loved ones. So thank you. Mr. List, I'll give it back to you.
Thanks for the good news, Mr. Hilton. Next we come to public comment. In accordance with the Open Meeting Act of nineteen eighty-six, the board provides opportunity for citizen input during the public comments section, session. Because agendas are full, each speaker is limited to three minutes. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement and not respond at this time. The presiding officer will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. Are there any public comments tonight?
Thank you, Board. I'm Patrick Gray. I'm the father of Olivia Gray and Lucas Gray. Two students who have worked their way, one of them worked their way through Tecumseh Public Schools and one that's still working their way through Tecumseh Public Schools. And I just want to say thank you. I know that the school board makes a lot of hard decisions. You're working within parameters and you don't get thanked enough Thanksgiving, thank you. And I mean that, I want to make sure that you understand where we're coming from. There's a whole group of people here tonight from the pool, from the swimming program, from the team. And there's great programs in Tecumseh Public Schools like the arts and, you know, what you brought up about Mr. Mckincheck is fantastic. The truth is, is that this makes well-rounded students, well-rounded kids, well-rounded adults. And what you want to bring out of this school system is well-rounded adults that can do great things and, and represent Tecumseh in a way that, that, that makes you proud. This, this program is growing. The school swimming program is growing. It's important. There's great leadership within this program and we live in the Great Lakes State. And I think that the importance of that is important, the importance of that is maybe we've all lived here, we just take it for granted. No one should leave a school system within the state of Michigan without knowing how to swim. And without having a pool and a true system to teach them how to swim is a true failure of any school system within Michigan. I could say that programs like this make our kids well-rounded and my kids have learned teamwork, learned how to deal with adversity, learned how to overcome. And I just think it's important that, that, that level of grit that the kids learn in sports like this can't be ignored. And there are kids in the swimming program that wouldn't be in other sport programs where they would learn those things. I'm confident you'll make the right decision. I know you're working under boundaries of what you have, but I'm confident you'll make the right decision for the students of Tecumseh. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello? I think people can hear me. My name is Jacob Willie. I lived, or I live at eight hundred Stetson Street for another six hours. I get, I'm really happy to hear you guys talk about Joe Mckincheck and give him the credit he's due, especially since I got involved in school boards two years ago when his job was on the chopping block. So I'm, I'm really glad that you guys are finally recognizing the good people, the good teachers we have at Tecumseh. And I'm glad you guys decided to keep Joe. I noticed you guys removed a press table here. Maybe we could change the name of the press section to the preferred press section. That conveniently happened after we had a blogger try to sit here. No offense, David, you're my boy. Okay, I don't know if you guys had a chance to read the Detroit Free Press article this morning on iWellness. This is something I know a little bit about. I wrote an article about it. I'd like to read you guys a little bit from that article this morning. Once again, Tecumseh's made the headlines. Referring to iWellness, "The check-in survey, which has made its way in front of a thou- thousands of students, doesn't appear to have this, to have been the subject of peer-reviewed research to prove, to prove its validity. Scientific Foundation, one expert told the Detroit Free Press, 'He would expect with such assessment. Nor does it appear to have been developed by anyone with formal training in psychology or mental health.' Founder Whitney Foley has been described in media interviews as a certified wellness coach, but isn't licensed in mental health or behavioral health fields by the state. The undergraduate degree she lists on LinkedIn is in communications and advertising." I would encourage you guys to read my article for more on this. Another Tecumseh parent, Michelle Malowitz, said she is concerned about how iWellness uses the data it collects. iWellness's online terms specify the company can use de-identified data for any lawful purpose. Amelia Vance, a student privacy expert and president of the Public Interest Privacy Center, said actually de-identifying data can be incredibly difficult for companies and could be particularly so for iWellness, given the sensitive nature of the data and the frequency that students take the check-ins. Quote, "Clearly, I think there ought to be better vetting of these programs," said state rep Tim Kelly, Republican from Saginaw Township. iWellness has spent more than fourteen thousand on lobbying in twenty twenty-five so far and spent a little more than twenty-four thousand in twenty twenty-four, according to disclosure reports. The Detroit Free Press made numerous attempts to reach Foley and the Hartleys, the creators of iWellness, including calling and sending email messages with no response. The article is much longer than that and I encourage you guys to read it. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Betsy Olberg. I am the swim coach for the high school teams. I wasn't sure if I was going to get up here and talk at all because I know today's just a discussion about what's been going on at the pool. But I want, wanted to make sure that as you hear the discussion and you hear all of the things about the maintenance or lack thereof of the pool, I wanted you to put faces to the people that are at the pool. Because I think that's important as you hear all the negative pieces, that you also know that there's a lot of positive things that have happened at the pool. I've been a part of a swim community since I was four years old when I started swimming. I've been a part of this swim community since two thousand and five when my kids started swimming. I started coaching about nine years ago. And I just, I just want to say really to, as you're hearing these reports, and I know a lot of it has to do with money, I want you to think about the swim community and when you get those numbers and you're figuring out, can we make this all work? Reach out to us because we have ways to find money as well that could help with the pool. But if you, you know, if you guys just make that decision on your own and you never reach out to us, then we never have that opportunity to try to make things happen with the pool. And I appreciate all of the money that, you know, the community has, sorry, I just turned around and saw you guys standing. All the money that the community has put into the pool and all of the money that is currently there. And if it's not enough, we want to make sure there is enough because we need our pool. We need this community to keep going. There's places near us that have two pools. Dundee has two pools. They've graciously letting us swim there. Chelsea is looking at opening an aquatic center in their community, which gives them a second pool. Adrian has started talking about an aquatics, a fitness, a community center. So they're looking at having two pools. We need at least one. This community needs a pool. People need to learn how to swim. They need places to go. They need places to belong. So I just wanted to come up here and say that and let you guys know. Any decisions, make sure you're really reaching out to us because we can help in some of, some areas. Thank you.
Any other public comment tonight?
Well, um, I'm Olivia Gray. I'm a freshman here at Tecumseh High School. I'm also a swimmer on our swim team. Um, I just, Coach had talked a little about our swimming community and I wanted to elaborate a little on that. Our swimming community includes our swim team, who really cares about this pool and really wants to be here and is really driving for this to keep going. We really appreciate having a swim team and we have enough people. Our swim team isn't dying necessarily. We just don't have a pool. Um, the swim community isn't just our swim team though. It's also anyone who's coming for things like open swim or lap swim. And also there's some teenagers who work as lifeguards and that is their high school job. That's how they're paying for their gas money. That's how they're working in their high school careers. And it's just, having a pool is really important for having a good community. And I just, I think it's a very important part of our town and I really have appreciated having a pool. So, yeah.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Cale Silverberg. I am a senior this year. I am the captain of the swim team, or one of the captains of the swim team. I also worked at the pool. I lost my job. Sorry, I'm not a good public speaker, so. Um, I lost my job, which was kind of a bummer, but many other people also lost their jobs. There, it's not just the swim teams. It's not just the public that comes in. People also have their jobs there. Um, I am also a school of choice, probably other captain, sorry, is school of choice. And there has been talks from the swimmers of if not having a pool, they're not going to continue possibly going here, which is losing students. And as my, myself, I, sorry, moved here in fourth grade because of the pool for the swim program. And obviously there's a lot of other things that I came here for, but the pool and the program was the main reason that I came here. And I know there's a lot of people that also came here for the swim program. And I think that it should be thought about that also the impact on the students and the population of the students because people do move here for the swim team. I, like I said, I have and people might move away because we don't have a pool. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, thank you for all of you who've commented. Um, on to revisions approval of the agenda. We do have a, 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 we have one.
I move to amend the agenda as presented for tonight's meeting, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, by removing the closed session from it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, removed, uh, closed session from tonight's agenda. Any questions from anybody on it? Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Simpson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And then I'll make a motion to set the agenda as now approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, approved the agenda is, uh, is now been approved. Um, trustee Simpson.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, then, uh, I think probably Mr. Hilton, if you had just a second, if you can explain the reason why we pulled that out of, of, of closed session.
Sure, I can. Trustees, I think you, well, I'm, I'm certain you know this, as part of the, the state of Michigan's budget this past October included dial, and this is typical, included dollars for Section thirty-one A A funding, which is mental health and safety dollars for kids. And those dollars are really important to school districts all across the state of Michigan. Well, new this year as part of that, um, uh, in order to receive those dollars, school districts have to agree to a number of things, one of which is to give up their, their right to attorney-client privilege in the event of a mass casualty event. Now, mass casualty event does not mean a worst-case scenario event. It could be a, an accident. It could be a, a fight at a, a football game, examples like that. So what has currently happened, this, this is evolving near daily at this point. Suits have been filed, both in federal court and state court. I'm watching those closely. The deadlines for opting into these funds continue to get pushed by the Michigan Department of Education. And rather than, um, make decisions tonight, we have another board meeting before the end of the year. I will continue to watch this closely, stay in touch with legal counsel and keep you as, as updated as I possibly can because again, it's, it's moving quickly.
And didn't they also make an agreement, uh, to date the December fourth, so then you can still opt in? Or then the court case comes down, other than maybe a half hour, half to the fact?
Correct. So hot off the press as of just this past Friday, the, the agreement that trustee Simpson is mentioning is, is that there is now an ability for us to opt in with then the ability to rescind our, uh, application for those funds by December thirtieth of this year, pending the outcome of federal and state cases.
All right.
Okay.
Now thanks, I, that explanation. Now we move to scheduled reports, uh, first and foremost, because Tucker needs to get back so he can do homework. We'll start out with Tucker Cole, student representative report.
Hello, Board. I'm excited to update you guys about the thing that's been happening this recent, uh, I see November. Months are going by fast, I'm not going to lie. It felt like two weeks ago we had a, a meeting at the home. To kick it off, um, I want to talk about our girls volleyball team. They had a, a really amazing postseason run that ended with a really close fifth set loss to Grand Rapids Christian. Um, we had two entire fan buses that ended up going though, which was really good, showing we had forty-plus students wanting to go and support our volleyball team. Um, at a two-hour away match, kind of like a testament, I think, to our school spirit and definitely an indicator of, um, the jungle and like how committed they are to our sports. Um, we have the turkey tournament coming up tomorrow, which is a huge rock, paper, scissors tournament that we do with, across the school with kids and, um, students. It ends with an assembly at the end of the day and, um, and then a, a, assembly at the end of the day with a staff or students volleyball game, which the students are probably going to win, I'm not going to lie. But either way, so we have that tomorrow. Everyone's looking forward to that right before the break. Um, like I said, Thanksgiving break, I can't, it's, um, can't put into words how excited some of the kids are to get out of the school for a while. But, um, and staff too, probably. But, um, our women's swim team also had a really great postseason run, sending multiple girls to states. I think a testament to, um, just overall our female athletics and how strong it is at the school, how prevalent, um, you know, hopefully our guys' teams can kind of kick it up in the next few years, but just a testament again to our really great athletics here. The county band festival also recently occurred and, um, we performed really great as a school. Um, I didn't go, but I heard video recordings. I heard it was really awesome. And adding to that, we have three all-state band members, um, Lucas Gray, Alyssa Eater, and Andrew Mckincheck also. He received really high honors in band, kind of showing equally as impressive as some of our athletic, some of our more artistic side of our, our, um, students. Eli Morris, um, represented our school for cross-country states a few weekends ago. I know this is sports-heavy, but all the championships happened within like the last two weekends, really. Eli Morris, um, a few weekends ago, and it was his second time going to states. An impressive feat. He's only a sophomore, so he's gone both his freshman and sophomore year. So, um, another really great showing for a sport in cross-country. Um, we had parent teacher conferences just a few weeks back at the school. And I've been at all of them just because of my mom. Normally I'm here in the building, but it's the most appearance I've ever seen in the school. So I think, and I heard that turnout was really good. A lot of people wanted to meet and talk with teachers in, in person. So I think that was, um, really great, um, kind of showing like version of the community a little bit with some of the school and staff. Um, we had a, we had a costume contest for Halloween. Um, it had, I think, ten main categories and most creative and best doer. And some of the costumes were amazing and that was really, really fun thing a lot of the students loved, getting to do things like that. It was put on by Ms. Mossman in leadership class and I know they'll be in the yearbook, so it's kind of another really fun thing that we got to do. Um, we added a parent representative to our high school's building improvement team, something of a really big step, I thought, that was really meaningful. Kind of showing again, like, um, making connections within the community, showing, um, maybe a little bit more input. We already had added students as press, previous year's student panel, but I think adding parent voices is, is important and kind of showing like a lot of development in terms of building tribe and all those expectations we had of building. Um, we only have two weeks after tomorrow before final exams and the semester ends. And a lot of students are very stressed, but I think, uh, just as many are excited for the holidays. And then, um, I know a lot of people, not a lot of people, but quite a few people, valedictorian, salutatorian for the graduating class will be sat after semester as well. So lots of big things with that. And then kind of finalizing prom, a lot of big dances coming up, so that's exciting. Um, our football team also made it into postseason where they played a tough match against Divine Child. Um, they're a really good team, but, um, I know that it was a really big thing that we made it to playoffs this year. So it's another really big showing for our team. Winter Formal is coming up, I think, it's on December sixth. The theme is winter nights and northern lights. Are just going to be amazing. It's going to be posted here at the high school and it's going to be open to all grade bubbles, not just, uh, not like prom where it's only juniors and seniors. So hopefully, uh, an opportunity for upperclassmen and underclassmen to kind of bond and connect a little bit. And then, um, the AP Environmental Science class at the high school, um, one of the AP classes we offer here got together to look at the northern lights a few, um, weeks ago at night outside of school hours. And, um, we thought those, I thought it was really impactful, kind of showing like, um, a group of students. I know it was twenty-plus kids too, who ended up showing up at night to just watch the northern lights. And I thought it was a really cool thing about kind of education connecting some students who maybe otherwise wouldn't always hang out together. And then that rolled up. We celebrated Veterans Day as a high school and, um, we shouted out a lot of our staff. Like, I know we have Mr. Dolson, Mr. Wellman, um, a lot of different staff members who, um, Mr. Corvair, Dan. A lot of our veterans here in the, um, school building and, um, just thanked them for their service, something that I thought was really special. And, um, the Beetlejuice Play and Drama Club productions are all, all underway right now. Um, I know they've been plastered all over the town, so I'm pretty sure most of you've heard about it, but I heard that it was really awesome. And, um, I'd like to get, like I said again, equally as, um, important and vital to our school as athletics. I think it's really important that some of the more artistic side of our school, um, and student body is getting shown. That's all I really have for this portion, but, um, I'd, like I said, I think the biggest takeaway really from November was that it was really fast-paced, but, um, had a lot of successes in both athletics and the artist, more artistic side of our school. Something that I think is really important, finding the balance between it. So, thank you, Board. Let me talk.
Any questions for Tu- Tucker? Who's the AP Environmental Science teacher?
Um, Ms. Atkins.
Where did you guys go?
I'm not in the class.
Oh, okay. I wonder where they went to get, where it was dark enough to really see the northern lights.
I thought they had gone to, I thought they had gone to a parking lot somewhere. I don't know. But I know that they got in the scene and that they took photos. I was in the AP Environmental Science last year, but we didn't go to the, it's okay.
Okay.
Just a little bit, so it's okay.
All right, didn't we, I didn't, I didn't want to put you on fire.
Yeah, I should skip.
Say, I don't know, I don't know. Unfortunate, unfortunate.
Next, the Budget Committee report from Mr. Simpson.
Yeah, um, we met on, uh, November seventeenth at five P M. Um, I'm not going to go through all of it, because Steve, um, Mr. Minar is going to present everything pretty much that we talked about. Um, one thing we did discuss, um, is we're working on our def, we're doing our definition for what, uh, how the fund balance was calculated. Um, so we discussed a little bit. We're still working on that, so it'll be more in the future coming through soon. Um, rest of it, um, I'm not going to steal his thunder, so, uh, nothing, Mr. Minar, I'll give you all the reports and everything. He gave us all his reports. We reviewed them. If you guys feel like to, we'll add the question back to him, so. We adjourned at six twenty, so.
Any questions about that question, Mr. Simpson?
I just wanted to add that I'm excited to, um, have a three-year forecast coming out, so that will be an additional part of the planning process.
Safety and Facilities Committee, Dr. Brooks.
So similarly, I will, uh, keep mine brief, because someone else will be presenting most of what we talked about. Uh, we did talk about however, that the Verizon Tower is underway. They're doing surveying this week and we should have executed copies and, and a deposit next week. There is, uh, we're going to There is, uh, work gonna be done on the TMS pole barn, um, it's got some siding and roof damage, so that is something that we are gonna be addressing. Let's see, we've got...
The pole barn?
The TMS.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, there was some damage on the roof, and then there was some peeling on the siding, and it, and some children have helped that peeling a little more, so we're gonna, we're gonna get, take care of that. Uh, we talked about some of the upcoming capital projects, and, uh, still looking at the Raptor kiosk, we're looking at doing a pilot at the, the high school and the middle school and see how that works out first. And then the, um, First Initiative Drinking Thought, Drinking, sorry, Drinking Water, uh, grant, we also were not awarded that one or the Motorola grant, so we're still hoping to maybe take another stab at another grant, but otherwise we'll be working on taking that out of, um, our budget. And that's what I got for you.
Any questions for trustee Brooks? Okay, on to the monthly financial report from Mr. Lennar.
Uh, good evening, Board, and, uh, thank you for having me back again. Uh, I know it's only been several weeks since we first met each other. Uh, during that time, we've had two budget committees and have moved forward on several different items. You'll notice in your packet tonight, a somewhat updated treasures report, where we are summarizing all of your expenditures on a single page to show what actually went out on a monthly basis. We're separating it from our payrolls, and then also, we're showing all of our different accounts payable of what happens, uh, on a monthly basis. You'll still get the check registers that details all of those check numbers and, and dollar amounts that were paid out, uh, but this is a summary that gives you a quick snapshot of, of what happened, uh, and, and how much money we spent, just over two-point-seven million dollars in the month of October. And so, uh, that will be something new, and then also, within the, the packet, I believe, are some revenue and expenditure budgets that are a little bit different than the summary page you used to receive. And, uh, those show, uh, a, a little bit of a breakdown of our revenues in terms of what are their areas, you're going to see a little bit different breakdown when, when we talk about the actual changes in them, but it gives you an idea of what our budget is, what we received this month, and what, and where the total stands year-to-date. And so you'll see that both on a revenue side, and then the other report is an expenditure report, and that shows all of the different expenditures, again, broken down, you used to see a single summary page, it used to say, uh, basic instruction. What is basic instruction? Well, when you look at this, basic instruction is elementary, middle school, high school, uh, pre-kindergarten or, or, uh, uh, early childhood and summer school. Added needs are special services and, uh, compensatory ed and, and vocab ed. So, those are things you saw as a total, but there's a lot of smaller pieces within those. And our goal in educating you with the budget, not just on the revenue side, but on the expenditure side, is to chunk that down into little pieces that are easier to understand and understand how we're spending our money and where we are in each of those areas. So part of this is to educate you and bring you along month-to-month as we go, uh, through the, the, the budget process and throughout the fiscal year. And so, uh, I, I, I hope you'll, uh, appreciate the information. Any questions, all you have to do is get ahold of Mr. Hilton, and Darcy will be here starting one day, and, and, and our new, fifth Director of Business Finance, uh, will, will be able to handle that. Um, and, and I'll be helping her out a little bit also. But I really wanted to get into tonight a little bit though, was, uh, information regarding our revenues. You used to see four lines, local, state, federal, and other revenues. Well, we've broken it down a little bit more for you, and we wanted to get into the calculation of what that is. So when our, our local revenues, everything that comes in, uh, uh, from us in terms of miscellaneous and, and other specific items, obviously the largest one is our property taxes that come in on the eighteen mils on the non-Homestead property values in the, in the district. And then, uh, so when you, you used to see one line item of four million one seventy-seven, you can see, we've summarized it into about twelve different areas. The one that I have to work on yet that I'm not comfortable with, and I haven't been able to validate, is the miscellaneous one. Uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars to me is not miscellaneous, it has to mean something, but I haven't had a chance to dive into that one, uh, and, and figure out what is all, what that, what's that made up of at this point in time. But that's where we started the year, the only change that we've made there so far is that the actual property values were a little bit different than what we started the year with, and so there's a slight increase in, in those revenues. On, and the, the green line there, and if, could we scroll down a little bit, and then the green lines here, the foundation discretionary and special ed, those four lines make up the state aid funding based off the foundation grant and our enrollment. So let's talk about our enrollment a little bit. Our enrollment for this fall was twenty-three ninety-four. Now, we, we budgeted around twenty-four oh three, which was last February's count, and February gives you a pretty good idea. We count students twice officially during year. First Wednesday in October, second Wednesday in, in February. Second Wednesday in February is ten percent of this year's money, and this October's count is ninety percent. So we do our little mathematics there and take a weighted average of that, and, and it tells us what we receive. So, in total, while the twenty-three ninety-four is nine students less than what we anticipated, it's only one less than last fall. And so in twenty-twenty-four, we had twenty-three ninety-five, and now we're, uh, we're at twenty-three ninety-four, which is good news, because the year before we lost eighty kids, I think it was, uh, we were down close to eighty kids in our enrollment count. So we were stable, which is positive news, uh, in many ways. And so when we take those numbers, and then we multiply it by the foundation grant, well, what happened with the foundation grant? When we passed our budget, uh, well, let's start, li- last year, our foundation grant from the state of Michigan was nine-thousand-six-hundred-eight dollars. We'd anticipated a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase, or changing it to ninety-five, uh, eight, uh, ninety, ninety-eight fifty-eight. However, with the final state aid bill passed in early October, they increased it by three-hundred-ninety-two dollars, or a hundred-and-forty-two dollars more than we anticipated, and the foundation grant is ten-thousand-fifty dollars. You multiply ten-thousand-fifty dollars in simp- simple math times the, the student count, and that gets us nearly twenty-five million dollars in those green lines that you see there in this budget. And that, that twenty-five million dollars is seventy-three percent of our overall revenues. So when we talk about our revenues, the two most important facts of that is what is our student count going to be, and what is the foundation grant? You put those two together, you put in a few other factors, and you can come up with the, the mathematics of how that works and, and, and get a calculation for that. So, the, the good news is, is that, that money's up over where we thought it would be. On this report, you see different colors. I'm, uh, I like to do color coding because when you talk with numbers, sometimes it's hard to get lost in them. And so, the green numbers, I said, were based off the foundation grant and the pupil count and the basic formula, the way it works. When we get into the orange numbers, or orange lines up there, those items are, are state grants that we receive, uh, and that were part of our budget that have, have changed, and, uh, they look like, uh, you know, it's obviously additional money. Though, those are what we consider categorical or restricted funds. A restricted fund means that it has a matching expenditure, so it's not just in the bottom line to be spent on anything from day to day. So, and you'll see these totals here in just a moment. And so, th- th- those orange lines are that. The blue lines are similarly restricted, and those are carryover dollars. Those, those are grants that we had last year, but we didn't spend it all. So we put the money on the sideline, put it on the balance sheet, and then we brought it back into this year's budget, but we've got to match it with expenditures this year. So, again, while it's new money and we look at this and we say, wow, that's a lot, a lot of money up there, Steve, in terms of what we see as increases from where we thought we were back in June when you approved the budget, they, they really aren't, uh, it, it isn't that way. But when we, when we look at the, the bottom line, if we went to the next, the bottom of the second page there, please, you can see that overall our revenues have, uh, we're projecting our revenues to increase by a million, just over a million three-hundred-thirty-five-thousand dollars this year, to, to thirty-four million seven fifty-two four thirty-five. However, of that, seven hundred, uh, just over seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand are those, uh, blue and orange lines, the restricted funds. And then, the unrestricted funds are all the other ones that aren't tied to anything. And the positive news there is that those that are available for everyday purposes are up just over five-hundred-sixty-nine thousand. How did that happen? Mainly, the foundation grant was, uh, uh, a big change of three-hundred-ninety-two versus the, uh, two-fifty that was budgeted. And secondly, uh, within the state revenues, there was a one-time allocation this year in the, in the funding for some prior year, a one-time payment to school districts, and that was, uh, two-hundred-and-six thousand that we hadn't anticipated, didn't even know it was coming. Uh, and, and, and obviously with the state aid bill being passed, uh, in early October, uh, had no clue it was coming. So, uh, that was a positive, and so it's good news for us. So overall, our revenues are, uh, are up, and will give us a little bit of flexibility with our budget. Uh, our federal revenues have not changed yet, we will get our final allocations here shortly, uh, and we'll be, uh, adjusting those, uh, for January. And then, um, the other thing is that I, I'm happy to announce that also within our budget, that bottom piece there, the other transactions for the most part, except for that final forty thousand on the bottom, our monies from Lenaway ISD. And, and so, when you figure that those total, uh, right around one-point-nine million dollars, or five-point-five percent of our revenue, I've been able to communicate with the, uh, business office at the ISD and, and verify the reliability of these numbers. So I think they're very close to what we could anticipate this year, and, and they, they gave me a printout of what they were from last year, and they were telling me that those things were continuing in terms of their funding for this year. So, they may change slightly, but in, in the basic terms, they're all going to be there, so, so that's the good news. Um, we did the revenues first because it's easier to do because there's fewer of them, uh, in, 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 in terms of the math. We are working on the expenditure side, uh, and we'll have that for you in January also, so that'll give us a better picture of where we are for the year. Uh, I, I don't, I can't say anything because I don't know all the, the calculations yet to tell you that it's going to be, uh, where it's going to be, but in the meantime, we'll continue to monitor, monitor that. Uh, while I've been on a somewhat restrictive schedule, the staff have been very supportive, uh, and, and working not just within the business office, uh, in, in the main office, uh, you know, helping and, and, uh, and I've been able to give them some information also that they needed to get things done, that they needed done. So it's been a very positive five weeks, six weeks now, I think. Uh, and so, I, I think we're on the right track, and we're, we're, we're moving forward, uh, and, and I'll, I'll stop it at that. I, ooh, I went too long.
Any questions?
Um, maybe not a question for you, but, uh, maybe more a direction to Mr. Hilton. Um, if we could understand, if looking at the, the expenditure that seems to be the most variant is Edgy Staff payroll, if we could maybe understand what we budgeted and how that's calculated and why maybe there are variances every two weeks, it, it went from one-thirty to one-forty to eighty-nine. So if that's maybe something that we can understand a little bit better, then we definitely can pull, I think that was one of those areas.
We'll be able to recognize those, they're based on, uh, we pro- within our group of contracted employees, we use Edgy Staff as that, uh, con- contracting company, and sometimes, uh, people are paid twice a month, sometimes they're paid every other week, uh, and so, uh, and there might be specifics in there that maybe there were some coaches in there that got paid on one pay, that could have been a little bit more, but we can look at those invoices and pull them apart and, and take a look and see what, I'm very familiar with the way they invoice, because we use them in my district, uh, well, my former district, uh, that I'm still there, uh, and so, uh, we, we can take a look at that and get that information.
Yeah, that would be great, I think, I think if we look at last year, that was maybe one of the areas of variance.
Yeah, obviously with one area with our special education, uh, our professionals in that area, there's one of our main variances that we developed, yes.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, Mr. Madison.
I'm gonna start here and then we'll, uh, give it the team's meeting here, that we do have our engineering and management, uh, team's meeting, we're gonna be here in person, um, but I do have our opinion from, uh, the, 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 our architectural company. Uh, so I want to take a minute just to kind of give a quick update, remind everyone where this started. So in the summer, we talked about, uh, the pool and the needs of what we talked about during our sinking boat, which was a roof, some structural, uh, issues that it had, mechanical, a number of problems that we looked at and were looking to repair. Upon, um, doing some investigations in the building, our architectural and engineering partners, um, had some concerns and wanted to do some further testing on the steel in the buildings. Uh, so that was in October, we brought that to the, or I'm sorry, in August, we brought that to the board, um, we talked to you guys about that. We put out some bids for selective demolition and some scaffolding on the inside of the building to be able to reach those inside steel girders and wall columns. And then, in November, you guys approved us to go ahead and move forward with that, uh, with the timeline of having those reports back to you guys here in November. Uh, Friday, we received that report, uh, we did share that with Mr. Hilton and then with the board, um, so we're here to talk about that tonight. Uh, with me I have Christine Kennedy, she is with, uh, Whiteman Associates, and I'm gonna let her go ahead and, and introduce, uh, who've gotten the line from Magnus, and then they will provide information on the reports tonight. A reminder that we just got these reports Friday, so tonight is to talk about the findings of the reports, it is not to talk about futures of the pool, because that, further information will be coming in December and January. Um, this is just basically what we found, where we're at, and then, that'll give us the information that we could use then to come up with what those options are going for.
Hi, everyone, uh, so Christine Kennedy, I'm an architect and educational planner with Whiteman and Associates, um, but most important, I come from a family of swimmers, divers, water polo players, and I've been part of the swimming community for probably over thirty years, so I just, I completely, um, understand where you're coming from, try to get an option or support. Um, I also want to extend my gratitude to the board for, uh, giving us the time, uh, to do this due diligence, to ensure the safety of your community. Um, I'd like to introduce, uh, our team, I have George Kekan, uh, an architect with Whiteman and our educational sector leader, and Troy Madlin from Magnuson Associates, he is our structural engineer.
Josh, you're logged in, right?
Yep.
Troy, are you available?
Uh, yeah, I'm here.
Hey, do you have a screen you want to share with us?
Hey, do you have a screen you want to share with us? Let me know when you have that pulled up, Troy. Okay. Do you want to go ahead and start with the discussion of the report and share your screen? That'd be great. We can, and we can see your screen. Sounds good. Thank you, Troy. Did, do you have any questions for Magnus?
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. This is Lynn Davis, Vice President of the Board of Education. Quick question that maybe is more for, feel like I'm back in COVID here. Maybe if everyone on the call mutes, there we go. The, the question I have, which maybe isn't answered tonight, maybe answered in December or January, is the columns in the wall. Do we have an estimate of how far into the length of those columns we see the laminar corrosion? I imagine as, as the engineer team gets into what is needed to repair, maybe that might be answered, but that, that would be my question, understanding that maybe we won't hear that till December or January.
Yeah, I would say that would be a part of what we bring back. So Troy, the question was, the columns in the wall, how far down is the delamination or that corrosion? And is that something that would be a full column replacement, or is that something that would be a partial column possibly be restored?
Yeah, so we usually have, we're always hoping that several of the columns, although it's not, all we have is
As this is, uh, this, this, uh, these early childhood numbers serve as indicators for our, our future enrollment happens. So in terms of our total enrollment, trustees, you can see that, and you know this, this isn't new information. We've had a, a decline from twenty-two, twenty-three through the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with a very small increase for this year. These numbers are actually reported through my school data, which is Michigan's official school data source. And again, represent the, the fall count day from each of the years listed. Now the, I do want you to know twenty-five, twenty-six is not confirmed yet, but that should be close. So what I really want to talk about, looking at kindergarten specifically, as you know, trustees, this, this is a, it's, um, this is often our first point of contact with families entering the district. And further, we know that, uh, stabilizing enrollment is best done from the ground up. It's not that we don't promote options in later elementary grades and through high school. We certainly do do that. But rather, we want families to begin with us and stay with us as a way of stabilizing our enrollment. So to that end, we are actually experiencing one of our strongest kindergarten enrollments of this past four years with a hundred and seventy-five kindergarten specific students. This trend is, is particularly noteworthy as it said, it does suggest to us that more families who live here are staying here rather than taking schools of choice options to other school districts. So let's look at young fives. You can see enrollment has largely remained, uh, stable, consistently serving anywhere from forty to forty-seven students. I do believe that this stability represents, uh, the ongoing value of this program for age-appropriate developmental readiness in kindergarten. And the fact that we don't necessarily see an increase is okay, given that our kindergarten numbers are improving overall. And it's also true that for some families, they simply prefer to keep their children home, uh, for another year and then enroll in kindergarten as opposed to enrolling in young fives. So I mentioned school of choice, uh, a little bit earlier. I want to touch on it now, uh, and talk a little bit about how schools of choice factors into our district at kindergarten and young fives. So we know that, uh, school of choice is an important metric as it demonstrates, uh, the interest that families from outside of our school district have in the programming that we offer here in Tecumseh. So again, looking at these combined numbers, we see consistency. And that consistency really is a range from thirty-four to forty-one students, which again indicates that families outside of our district are, uh, continuing to value what the Tecumseh Public Schools offers at young fives and kindergarten. So in looking at the combined total of kindergarten and young five students, we see the, again, the overall trend of our, uh, young fives and kindergarten enrollment. And this current year continued, or that continues, this current year shows growth of a class size of the two, of two-hundred-and-fifteen students. I do believe again that this is a, an indicator that more families that live here are choosing us, which is a great thing. So I'm sharing all of that as context to, to really talk a little bit about, uh, the future. So trustees, you may, may remember this from, from last fall, and I, I believe I presented it to you in January. I had a study done on the birth rates in Lenoir County so that we could make the best possible and well-informed decisions regarding enrollment, budget planning, future planning, the sale of our element, of our elementary buildings, so that we had some data on which to make all of those decisions. So what I'm going to do is just briefly revisit that data with you as it pertains to a couple things. One, I'm going to show you the countywide enrollment numbers. And then two, I'm going to show you county birth rates. And then three, we'll talk a little bit about how we're doing and what we can expect in the years ahead. So first off, what you see on the screen there is the countywide public school enrollment data. You'll notice that between the fall of twenty-nineteen and the fall of twenty-twenty-four, Lenoir County has seen roughly an eleven-hundred student, uh, decline of, of public school students in the county. Now, a large chunk of that, you can see it, a large chunk of that did come during the COVID year of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, but nonetheless, the pattern definitely shows a decline. So this is informative in the sense that it's telling us that there just simply aren't as many students in Lenoir County. And a decline of eleven-hundred students in five years actually is quite severe. So the enrollment data, when I have it from the, from the LISD, I will share it with you, but it's just not available yet for October, October, November. So secondly, here is the, you've seen this, here's the, the, the birth rate data. Specifically, you can see that the birth rates are down drastically, or this, this is reminders for you all, but the birth rates are down drastically over the years from a high of one-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-one in two thousand and six to the most recent number of eight-hundred-and-eighty-one in twenty-twenty-four. So what I'm going to do now is show you the projected numbers for twenty-five, twenty-six and beyond. Again, this isn't new and you've seen it, but it is informative to our future planning. Now, before I, I show you them, I want to, uh, one really important reminder. The projections that you'll see, and I said it at the time and will say it again here, the projections that you will see assume all factors are staying relatively the same. So what I mean by that is the outflow of schools of choice students and the inflow of schools of choice students stay relatively the same and we continue to see in that right-hand most column about twenty percent of the county enrollment. So as a reminder, for the birth year of twenty-twenty, those children entered this year in twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six and represent our current young fives and kindergarten class. So last year at the time, the projected class size was a hundred-and-eighty-four combined young fives and kindergarten students, which again represented about twenty percent of the county enrollment. As you learned earlier, we actually enrolled two-hundred-and-fifteen combined young fives and kindergarten students. So you can see the projections for future years below the red numbers. It's my goal and it will continue to be our goal to beat projections. Having said that, there is something that's really important that jumps out within these numbers. And that is that the days of enrolling kindergarten-specific, not including in fives, kindergarten-specific class sizes of two-hundred-plus students, uh, with, uh, are most likely behind us. So further, even if we were to improve our percentage within the county, uh, we will most likely continue to face the challenge of simply graduating, uh, senior classes that are larger than our incoming young fives and kindergarten classes. So this, so that fact, um, makes working to find our, our budgeting efficiencies, the work that, uh, Steve is doing, I am doing, uh, Darcy, when she joins us next week, will be doing, the work of finding those efficiencies and improving our overall fund balance, that much more important while we also continue to promote our staff, our programs and sell our, um, opportu- self, share, I would say share, share our opportunities, uh, for, uh, the programming that we have here in Tecumseh, not only in young fives and kindergarten, but across the board. So last thought, and I'm going to stop talking here and, and open it up for discussion. What I'm saying, what I'm saying here tonight is, is, none of it is unique to us here in Tecumseh. Districts all across Michigan are faced with the similar challenge of graduating classes that are larger than their incoming classes. And this data and three-year projections will allow us to be able to better predict and plan for any of those eventuali- eventualities. So in summary, again, we did, uh, beat projections this year, which is a great thing. We'll continue to, uh, promote our, our schools. And, and this evening was really just giving you an update on where we're at, big picture, uh, enrollment-wise and how we're going to plan for the future. So I will pause here and open it up for any comments or discussions. If it.
I have, I have just kind of something like positive, I think, is that, uh, the two things you pointed out, the kindergarten stability is very important, and that's kind of, it's a, it's a good indicator that we're doing things right, that we hit that. And then the other one is the school of choice, I think, was very important. And that's also showing how we're trying to, to save it. So I think those are the two things that we can focus on and control, and I'm glad that you shared that with us, outside of the county and the state, I think we didn't go larger, you mentioned the states, same thing, right?
Yep.
And it does tie right into us planning for the future, because that ties right into our amount of funds we're going to be able to, to run the school. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
All right, going to item schedule for the next agenda, Mr. Hilton?
Yep, certainly, trustees, we will, um, uh, have, uh, items for the next agenda. I know nothing is listed there, we're, um, the pool will be on our mind. I will have some good news updates and, uh, next two weeks from today will actually be my year-end evaluation. So I'll be sharing information with you in regard to that very, very soon.
Okay, this brings the board member comments or discussion. Are there any comments from the board tonight?
Uh, I have a few. First, I want to, uh, thank everyone who, um, stood up today and talked with us, especially our scholars from Tecumseh High School, um, that shared their feelings on the pool. Um, as Coach Betsy knows, my daughter is one of those kids who that's probably the only sport she would do. So, um, uh, very difficult to see the conditions that we saw this evening, um, personally understanding what that looks like to my, uh, junior to be a senior next year, so. Um, also a thank you, uh, Mr. Hilton, to the accessibility of your presentations. So thank you for not using the orange background, which can be very, very difficult for people, uh, with visual impairments. Um, so I, I appreciate that as well. Um, my children were in the Halloween costume, um, contest. I had an astronaut and a dark angel, so, um, two very different children. Anyway, um, but I, uh, just a couple of other things, um, regarding the budget committee. So when I was at the M A S B annual learning, or annual leadership conference a few weeks ago, um, I sat in a couple of seminars, uh, where they talked about budget. One was about, uh, budget and, um, relationships with the community. Um, the other one was, was kind of like, um, budget anatomy and, and that sort of information. Uh, the key thing that came out of that for me is that forty-one percent of the school districts in the state of Michigan, in some part, uh, have their budget or finance committee as a committee of the whole. And so, um, I'd like to ask Mr. Hilton and my fellow board trustees to consider, kind of noodle on, should we make at least our budget committee a committee of the whole? I think for me, uh, I think it could be very, very positive and here's why. I think, uh, Mr. Lennar shared very good information with us, but he goes into more detail in the budget committee meeting. So, um, it would allow all of us to hear the same information at the same time. It would allow all of us to ask our questions to Mr. Hilton and to our new director of finance at the same time. And, and in a, while the budget committee meetings are public and open, obviously this forum provides for a more public and open forum. And so, um, that's something that I, I would like us all to consider. And I think as we work on, um, solidifying, strengthening, rebuilding, um, our, uh, fund balance rule and then the plan to strategically build it up to a level that we want it to be at, um, it's helpful if we're all at the table at the same time as things are presented, um, and in my opinion, ask questions and share information from that perspective. So that's just a bit of information. Um, I can't remember the percentage, it was slightly lower. The next target for me would be the policy committee, uh, because we do not meet monthly. Um, and so I, I feel like that's another maybe area, but maybe we start with the budget committee as a committee of the whole. The way that most of those school districts manage it, similar to us, they have meetings every other week or meetings twice a month. In the first meeting of the month, uh, the budget committee of the whole is, uh, the study session for that is included in the board meeting. And then any actions would be in the second meeting, so that's something that we consider, um, as we move forward. Um, the other, uh, thing, again, the edge of staff, very important because I think that is, um, being able to visualize where there's variability in our kind of quasi-fixed cost of salaries. I know traditionally in accounting, those are considered variable, but realistically, they're more like a fixed cost. And I think that would be helpful. And then, um, I'd like to know a little bit more about eye wellness. I remember when, when it was brought in in the curriculum, I think it was more of a report, of a report, less of a vote from the board, but I'm not sure on that, so don't, I want to check into that. But I would like to know a little bit more about what we're seeing from that, if we think that's beneficial or if there's, um, you know, that kind of came up, I think around the time that the state was starting to encourage with COVID, some mental health check-ins.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there was some funding related to that, uh, through the county and state. Uh, but, um, we should always be looking at those programs and considering if, if there's not something better or something different that we can do. So, Mr. Hilton, I, I'm assuming you're already doing that, but I just wanted to put that in.
Can I, just to kind of piggyback on what Glenn was saying there, the, um, the privacy concerns with the data that were raised on a public comment is an aspect of that that we've talked about that I think is a very valid concern. Anytime that, you know, we have a third-party group in here, you know, as a, as a school district, we have to protect that, um, student information and, and family privacy. Um, are we certain that we're being cautious enough with the groups that, you know, we partner with? That, that's, and I'm not singling out eye wellness here on that. I think we've had this discussion with, um, you know, different apps that have come up over time. But, you know, anytime we're asking the kids to enter this information and transmit it digitally, who has access, what are they doing, um, what profit motive do they have to give, all right? And I think that's something we, we need to be vigilant about with, with any program we're using.
I would think too, just a, a review of the contract to make sure, you know, we have, uh, I think data privacy laws and expectations are changed, um, since that program came into place. But if, if there is a decision to, you know, eye wellness, um, making sure that the contract is, is only such that it's, I think, the rules, um, and maybe even separate, uh. When, when data companies say that they anonymize or de-identify, uh, data, um, that's for recording where it's not visible, that doesn't mean that the data still isn't there. Um, and so, um, to Dr. Martinez's point, um, eye wellness or any of those types of opportunities that we utilize, um, for, for utilizing apps in the, in the district, um, we need to make sure that we're, we're being careful about the identification and, and protection of that in, uh, uh, how, how we, I remember, I mean, yeah. I have several states in our brain about this more professionally, but I think Michigan has a stronger child slash student data requirement in state law. And so, um, we just want to make sure, um, I think it's important with kind of, uh, um, visibility of eye wellness at this point, that, that we can provide, you know, protections for us against people. Obviously, eye wellness, I think, is supposed to be used for, not extensively, but enough across the state. That probably is how people are looking to it as well, but I agree with you.
I will.
Well?
So I know you mentioned the Beetlejuice. I did go, we have got some phenomenal kids. That talent is just incredible. Not, not only just the, the, the acting, the music, the sets, all of it, really awesome.
About forty-one percent. And that's, that's in some way, shape or form, it may not be how we do it, but maybe it's like what we do at that company. The other thing that I, um, in one of the, in one of the seminars that I thought was interesting was they are budget committee of the whole, I think they call it financial committee of the whole. But, um, their treasurer meets with their director of finance every month. Um, and it's a rotating schedule of a second board member that joins. So that in, in that kind of discussion, each board member kind of has an opportunity twice a year to, to be involved in this.
Anybody else? What's that? I'm in favor of it.
You just don't want to cheer it.
And everything was like, when I was looking at that, I'm like, God, they just look like rusty old gears, like they never had any code or anything. I would think with today's technology, they would be able to do something to help, because I'm not sure a system would be.
Especially when you know you well, that we have to get customized, you know, the.
Well, I, I think let's take a step back. When was the pool that, okay, so even automotive technology for coatings has changed dramatically over that lifecycle and for building might be different. Um, I'm sure though that the, we need something that must more back home. Um, it does seem a little odd, and if you look at, uh, Public Vote recently, or refurbished, they all have that kind of fire coating, um, foam coating shaped, um, sprayed on all the girders and that. But, um, we decided somewhere along the way, although I've heard from a friend in the construction industry that those drop ceilings actually were quite common at that time for our school, so. But I, I think it's good to, um, I'm sure the inherent girdle look of growing and understanding the difference of.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sure there wasn't, and back then it was probably more today's technology. I'm sure there's something that they can, I did, I just wanted to say thank you to the students that stood up here and voiced their opinion and shared it, because I think not only is it important for us to hear, but I think it's an important growth opportunity for them to speak up and share their opinion and what it means to them. Um, I think it goes a lot to the coach and the team to be able to get them to come up here and do it, so thank you. Um, it's just, uh, to sit up here as a board member and hear, this has been a discussion for how long? Forever it seems like, and it's just, uh, it's kind of sad to hear that it, it could affect so many people or that it's just a tough decision, tough place we're in. I feel bad for everyone that was involved and that, that we have to close it down. But I do want to say one thing, looking at the pictures, and I know they were magnified and everything else, but I, I am very appreciative of Mr. Hilton and Josh for closing the pool when they did, because I just fear that something, when you see that, you've got to think of the safety of the students and the people that use that. And so I appreciate that very much, it's always got to be our number one priority as we sit up here, so thank you. And again, thank you for the, for the girls that stood up, I do appreciate it.
I'm going to jump in for one, look, probably, and then someone's got to say that, the, the parents, we made the point about, um, kids graduating school knowing how to swim. I'm going to call back on the man who got the case here and say, I, I could not agree more with this water injuries in a state like Michigan are extraordinarily common. Um, everybody in this state lives where the stones throw up a lake or standing water, that is an opportunity for a child to drown. And, um, you know, school districts, uh, being involved in, in swimming education is, uh, a, a lifelong safety benefit for people. I think that's an important point. I, I think the, the athletics, the dance stuff is great, and I think it's great that you guys are here and advocating for it. Um, my son was in Tiger Shards, and it's, it's a huge benefit. But all around, you know, knowledge of swimming is a, is a, is a lifelong benefit that goes away.
Anybody else?
Um, yeah, one thing, I, uh, I'd like to see us develop, uh, a class for, um, AI here. Um, so kids actually know what prompts to put in, um. This, this is going to, this is already revolutionizing the things that we haven't even seen yet. Um, and I think it's something we really need to jump on, like, for next year, yes, it is. Um, this is, I played with it last night for three hours and I developed this whole, uh, inventory management system. With a purchase order system on it, uh, receiving items in, um, and it coded everything for me. I just put in the prompts, know what I wanted, and hey, there we go, it didn't work. So, um, that's just something silly, but this is going to have huge effects on the entire world. So if we can get our kids to know how to use it, it's a good luck, jobs, or create their own businesses. I mean, it's crazy, so I, I, I would have took in a year, the program was, I did last night, three hours, just kind of asking to make things. So it would have took a development series, like a year or two, so, um, and yeah. I think we've really got to get on top of this, so. Is that it? Anyway, just, just my thought, but it's, it's going to be, it's huge.
Gosh.
And, um, I hate to see it, but it's going to be, it can be a lot of jobs gone, but, so, it's unfortunate, but it's kind of like the horse and buggy too, you know, so. And then on that note, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, so.
Along here?
Yes, sir.
I guess like, um, a question that I had like during the superintendent presentation that I think I have to ask, I don't know the exact figure, um, of the percentage of school of choice students that are in this school, but I'm wondering, like, I'm curious, like, in recent times, Amy Pauling was done of like, what is the big draw of Tecumseh High Schools for these, um, school of choice students? Like, what factor, maybe it's a pool that we make, or maybe it's one that's existed between the last decade? What is drawing them in? Is it the AP classes or is it the sports that we offer that maybe other places don't? Like, I know quite a few kids coming for lacrosse because no other, um, school is near them in a forty-minute, uh, like, drive offers it. So like, maybe just like a closer glimpse into, um, what is the exact factor that we are offering here that contributes to school of choice students that should come?
I, I think you're bringing up a, a question that I don't have a specific answer to. Anecdotally, you started to answer some of it with why, uh, kids are choosing us, but, um, give me a little time on that. I like that. Thank you.
Give it to AI.
Well, ma- ma- maybe, you know what, Mr. Lewis, that's not a bad idea. We'll talk.
I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what, um, Mr. Simpson was saying, um, about developing other classes. And, um, the president of Adrian College, uh, recently, in the past week or two, gave a speech, um, to Congress, I believe, um, about a system that he helped champion, um, that basically helps to launch new programs very quickly, very, um, efficiently or cost-effectively, um, kind of leveraging. I know that that's for, um, colleges and that's a different kind of revenue structure, um, but we might be able to use a similar system or similar concept where there's essentially a sharing of costs or something like that, and it's a whole computer system, to my understanding, that he has. Um, so, I mean, he's just basically gone the road. Maybe, um, uh, having a, a talk with him or maybe even inviting him here to tell us about his program a little bit more depth would be, um, advantageous to launching these things more rapidly. And, and also along that line, I, I do very much, although my, my vote may seem like it went against what I'm saying, I do value very much, uh, the, uh, additional AP class, um, that was, was proposed. Um, but that along with pretty much any decision that we're making here at the table that has any level of financial impact, I think, uh, at least from my perspective, we need to make sure that that has a home. I understand we said that didn't have, um, any cost implications at the current time, but I don't think we have that answer for next year when this class would be launched. So, um, I guess I would just ask that we, we have a place for anything that could potentially be an expense moving forward? Because in, in the past couple of weeks, we've talked about a lot, and I just kind of see the dollar signs racking up. And, um, I just want to make sure that everything has a home in place. Thank you.
Is that a comment? All right, I'm, uh, I'm asking for most to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
I'm moving second to do adjourn, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Not AI, but be adjourned.